The meeting, the closing order. The consideration for approval of the minutes.
Hello.
Second.
Paul, not any further discussion? One favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked.
Same.
Fortune passes four, zero, one down, standing down. Thank you. We sent items five, eight through C. Any questions? GM is the partial payment, Ray or Jill somebody?
It's the first fan on the six, seventh.
Paul? Not anymore.
Second.
Paul, any further discussion? I say they're on, Ray earlier said they're about on schedule.
Pretty close.
Okay, very good. I see you got... Moyau Park and you already had leveled some of that, so it'd be more forthcoming.
Brandon, you keep it level so the park's moving in.
You bet. Very good. Okay, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried. I need to back up and add, if you're looking on the amended agenda, I need to ask the council to approve adding eleven, three vending wagon license. That has to be added to the agenda. I apologize, I should have done that first.
License?
Vending wagon license. It's not on here, I just want to add it.
No.
And we'll have it here to bring up.
Come on.
Paul and Nonny, any further discussion? One in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried unanimous. That will be added to the agenda. All right, we will recess the regular council meeting at seven oh six and we will open the public hearing for the business subsidy for DOTA USA Incorporated. Corporate expansion. We now open to the public hearing.
The attorneys have developed a development agreement and a tax increment revenue note between the city of St. James and DOTA USA Incorporated.
Does everybody have one?
Yes. DOTA plans on constructing a facility of approximately thirty-one thousand two hundred square feet north of their present facility. And that would be located in lot two, block two of industrial park number three. They've requested tax increment financing for a term of nine years. Construction would either begin in September of this year or in the spring of next year. The project is a pay-as-you-go project. No bonds will be issued. The payment to DOTA will be not of the collected tax increment. Tax increment funds will be used for a number of items that are listed on the flip side of your exhibit. Can be used for landscaping, foundations and footings, grading earthwork, engineering, surveying, environmental testing, soil boring, site preparation, on-site utilities, stormwater retention if needed, outdoor lighting, on-site road, curb gutter, sidewalks, driveways, street landscaping and parking. The project is to create three additional jobs within the first five years at an hourly rate exceed one-hundred-and-twenty percent of the state minimum wage. Within seven years, within the first five years, after seven years they're supposed to add, up to seven years, they're supposed to add two additional jobs. And if at the end of seven years, they do not have five additional jobs, they would not receive the last two years of the tax increments. If they do not create the jobs in that tax increment, the last two years will come to the city office as a special assessment on the lot which we sold to them for now.
So again, they pay the taxes first. We keep ten percent of the taxes for administration costs and then the other ninety percent is given back to them. But they pay them first, so it's called pay-as-you-go. This was approved by the PDA earlier. Last month, Paul?
Yes.
Any comments or questions? Folks in the audience, any comments or questions on the tax increment, on the public hearing, excuse me, for business subsidy? Any questions on the business subsidy for DOTA? Any questions for the business subsidy of DOTA? Okay, council thoughts and comments or questions?
Compared to the size of the building they have now, will it be the same size approximately? Or I don't know how many square feet the one is that they have. Will it be attached or do we have...
It will not be attached, no.
Is that the building?
Larger.
Larger, okay.
It'll be quite a bit when you want it. Yeah.
As the initial, excuse me, as the current proposal is, yes, it's quite substantially larger than the existing on the next lot to the north and will not be attached. So it's on the separate of the next lot.
Okay.
They anticipate that their manufacturing will take place in the new facility and the current facility would then be used for showroom and then possible additional storage if necessary.
Should they be seeing as a new one as well?
Yes.
Some more?
Second.
Just now we have closed the public hearing first. There's no other questions, our comments from the council member. We'll close the public hearing at seven ten. We'll reconvene now to the council meeting. And now, is this...
No, we don't authorize the...
Resolution form?
No.
Then we need to authorize...
Mayor on the floor.
To sign it herself, or the man in the city clerk to sign this agreement with DOTA. So if that's a motion and you said that, Josh, okay? Any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried unanimous, thank you. So we will be in contact with, you see, Mary Pickle at Briggs and Morgan, Mike Jacobs, who's the attorney for DOTA, Philip Russell from DOTA, Shannon Sweeney, the bond consultant. I'm missing somebody. Come on, listen.
Oh, yeah.
You and I, we've been on a conference call for mutual times where I think I'm missing somebody, but anyhow, that's who we've been negotiating with through the time. Okay. We'll go to eleven, eight. Kevin Rort, Pedlar License, Education Books Once a Week, Steve.
I would just ask if you approved this, you know, subject to the order of a license conducting themselves in professional manner, not using inappropriate sales tactics? Hard sell, sales tactics?
In selling your books.
In selling the books. Okay.
Anybody? It's a motion or a second? Harrison with Steve's recommended language. Yeah, okay, okay. And so, do they have to give us anything for the license you have? Do you have, okay, do you have it?
Okay, so we already have the bond, subject to getting the necessary...
I'm assuming this is door to door.
Yes, it is.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried unanimous. Eleven, two, application for exempt permit, St. James Youth Baseball Association, Rappel. Anything in order there? Okay, very good.
Second.
Paul and Josh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried unanimous.
Can we have the paperwork tonight?
There's nothing that we don't have on any of the three. Okay. Rappel for baseball association. If you'd like to get a copy, she's going to be concerned to get it to you.
Paul, you got the...
She has it, yeah, we didn't...
No, I don't want it.
A copy wasn't for us, yeah. Okay, eleven, three, vending wagon license. Thursday, Friday and Saturdays, from ten a.m. to seven p.m. For Asian food. They'd like to be a park where the farmer's market is, east of the, where our flag is in the downtown park where the farmer's market is. We'll let the folks that are here, if one of you want to come up and speak to it, that would be great. Introduce yourself and just tell us what you want to do, up here on the mic.
I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. Might have to pull it down a little higher for you. Okay, very good. Introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
My name's TKC beside, I'm interpreting for my sister.
Thank you.
And we wanted to sell Asian food like lo mein, chicken fried rice, fried fish. We got more on the menu, but some of the ideas that A. grows and wants on. And she likes those hours during that time if possible.
Yep, ten a.m. to seven p.m., Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Yep.
Okay.
This just be through the end of summer then, or...
Yep.
Okay.
Whenever you guys are done with it, we'll be done with it.
With the farmer's market, you mean?
Yep.
Oh, we just go inside with the farmer's market. Where are you from?
Butterfield.
Butterfield, okay.
Have you done this before, or is this a new thing, or...
We used to sell here right behind...
Oh, okay.
Boston.
Okay.
And then, a little location within that area.
Okay.
So then we went all the way to Warrington.
Okay.
It cost us too much just to haul it all, all the way to there.
One question we have is, in visiting with Adam, our electrical superintendent, make sure there's enough electricity there for you.
Yep.
If there isn't, then we'll have to come back here where you were, but it should be okay. But in the event something that there isn't, Adam will let you know and then we'll move you to there if the council approves it.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Do you have all the health certificate certifications and stuff?
We give all the paperwork.
Again, we don't have it, but we discovered it here like ten minutes ago.
Right.
So we'd have to pass it, subject to all of this passing in.
So when would we find out?
I would say in about five minutes.
Five minutes.
You better. If there's anything else you want to add, I mean, please.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any complaints when they had it in the past?
No.
Nope, nope.
Delicious.
No. Good food.
Yep, awesome food. Okay.
Joe, move.
Paul, Don Harrison, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried unanimous. It was a quick five minutes, so when do you want to open up?
We can start next week.
All right, okay. If you can coordinate with City Hall, that would be great. And then let Adam know so we make sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thirteen, eight. Marty, Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities, recap of activities. You're up.
What's it set up, is this...
Voice activated, turn up the...
Okay. Really?
Yep.
I'm blinded. All right, very good. Thank you for having me. By way of introduction, my name's Marty Seifert, I'm a lobbyist with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, Flare, Ian Hood, which is contracted through the mayors and council persons who are elected by your association to represent you. By way of introduction, I served fourteen years in the House of Representatives and this is my first year as a lobbyist, enjoyed it very much. It's nice to have a focus on just rural cities and keep it to one area instead of all sorts of different things, which is what I was used to before. I do have a handout that reflects what you see in front of you, which is this packet right here. Moving to page two, Coalition represents eighty-five cities across the state in the eighty non-metro counties of Minnesota. We focus mainly on local government aid and property taxes, economic development, annexation, transportation, environmental regulation. Our association is governed by a board of directors that is designated through the association. And we will be having a conference here in a couple of weeks. I saw on your agenda you have schools and conferences and things on your agenda. And the next meeting we have will be in Duluth. And this blue packet that you have that was also handed out, there's a registration and an agenda, if you are interested, be very informative for you, July twenty-second to the twenty-fourth. If you haven't sent anyone before, you have a new member of the council that you find that very, very interesting. Just to give you the lay of the land for 2015, the Coalition was one of the few organizations that was allowed to sponsor a gubernatorial debate last year. It was held in Rochester.
There you go.
We had our elections last fall and the House of Representatives flipped from DFL to GOP. There was a lot of discussion about the Greater Minnesota session and I think a lot of that revolved around the fact that all but one of the seats that flipped were in rural Minnesota, mainly in the western part of the state, northwest. So we ended up after the election having divided government. We had obvious party, regional ideological divides, which we always do. The main part of what 2015 was all about was the budget. Major budget bills had to pass and if they did not, that portion of the government would shut down. Our goal for our local government aid was to return to 2002 funding levels. We didn't think that was too big of an ask. That wasn't adjusted for population or inflation. We just wanted to get what we were getting thirteen years ago. We also had, what I thought, early modest Greater Minnesota Economic Development Plan that included workforce housing, job training, the BDPI program and broadband, a comprehensive transportation bill and environmental reforms. The budget forecast showed that we would have a surplus. The November forecast from last fall showed a little over a $1 billion surplus when revenues and expenditures were estimated at current levels by law, including those items that had inflation or entitlement built into them. When the February forecast came out, that grew to $1.8 billion of a surplus. If you had it into the budget reserve, we'd have a little bit over $2 billion all put together. So revenues have consistently been above projections. The House GOP decided to focus more on tax cuts. There was party pressure for give it all back. So they took the estimated amount of money that was coming in for surpluses to go into tax cuts. They also proposed spending reductions in the human services area, an increase in nursing homes, but a decrease for everything else. Hundred fifty-six million increase for education on the K-12 level, fifty-three million for higher ed and some reductions to economic development and the environment. There were cuts to LG for first-class cities proposed, that'd be Minneapolis, St. Paul and Duluth. Our organization has tended to oppose reductions for LG in just picking certain cities. Duluth is a member of our coalition, they're the second biggest member after Rochester. And the thought process the mayors and council members have that are on our exec board is, if you just arbitrarily pick a city like Duluth or Minneapolis and pick on them, what's that to say in a year or two they're going to pick on St. James or New Ulm? And so that's part of the reason you have a coalition, is that you stick up for each other. It's kind of like World War II, if someone declares war on someone, the others stick up for the ones that are getting picked on. So the arguments on the first-class city is it was originally intended for small cities. The nineteen-seventy-one LGA law directly gave money Minneapolis and St. Paul specifically. Some people say first-class cities get too much. Their appropriations have actually fallen as a percentage of the overall LGA pot from thirty-eight percent in eighty-six to thirty-two percent in 2015. And then there's a discussion that they have more tax base than anyone else in the state. So we took the list of the eight-hundred-plus cities in the state and we looked at the property tax wealth per capita. And Minneapolis ranked one-hundred-and-fifteen, St. Paul two-hundred-and-seven, and Duluth two-hundred-and-forty. So the arguments that were made around the policy didn't make a whole lot of sense after we tried to break it apart. So the Coalition pressed for an LGA increase. To get back to 2002 levels, you'd need twenty-two-point-seven-five million increase in calendar year sixteen, which is this fiscal year. Twenty-two-point-seven-five million in calendar year seventeen, which is the next biennium. And we believe that would help cities catch up on infrastructure, capital purchases and things that you didn't do when there were LGA cuts. Buying certain things, police cars or redoing streets or whatever it is. There were a lot of things that were deferred in those years where LGA was going down. We thought this was a good time to catch up. The governor did not support any increase to LGA and ultimately what ended up happening is no tax bill. So essentially the governor's no increase to LG is what ended up happening. The tax bill on the Senate side gave the increase that we proposed and the House proposed a cut of the first-class cities only. They proposed leaving all the other cities the way they were. So there ended up being no tax bill. The House passed their bill, the Senate passed their bill. They appointed a conference committee of five members of the House and five members of the Senate to sit together and try to work out differences and they just couldn't come upon a tax bill conclusion. The interesting thing about local government aid is it's an open and standing appropriation. In other words, if there is no tax bill, LG stays at the level it was last year. Where if you have no environment finance bill, the state parks all close on July first. So there's a unique thing about local government aid and that's something we've worked on in the past. And if they can't come upon a conclusion, at least to get what you have last year. Because if you had your, the rug pulled out from under you in many of these rural cities, one-third to one-half of your revenue would go away because a lot of rural cities are very dependent on LGA. And I don't know what you would do if all your, you know, if all of your LGA for St. James is pulled away. I'm assuming that would be a pretty big chunk of your budget, Joe, so...
Probably not.
Is it about the...
Fifty percent of our general fund.
So it's a pretty important piece and you'd be making some pretty tough decisions right now. So it's one of the things that we've lobbied for, is to keep that as a standing appropriation so you have some planning in your budget, you don't have these large decreases. So if you take a look at that chart, essentially in a nutshell, rural Minnesota gets not quite two-thirds of the LGA allotments in the state of Minnesota. The metro area gets a little over one-third. St. James, I just pulled this out in particular for you so you can take a look at how St. James stacks up under our proposal. The current law of 2016, you're, you're at one-point-six-oh-eight million dollars. The enacted law is the exact same amount because as I said, with no tax bill, you have the same amount this next year as you had last time. Under our proposal in 2016, you would have received, and this was under the Senate bill, one-point-six-seven-nine million, so you would have had about a $71,000 increase. And then you would have had an additional increase in 2017. If you take a look going back to 2002, you actually would be doing better than the 2002 levels because of the formula changes that were made in the last several years. So while we're advocating for going back to the 2002 level overall, because of formula changes, St. James would actually be coming out ahead. Environmental regulatory reform, the challenges we've had is the rulemaking process that has come forward from the Pollution Control Agency, been very extensive and we believe somewhat arbitrary. It is, can end up being a very large unfunded mandate on many of our rural communities. And some of the rules that came down are not being adopted by any other state in the country. And so the mayors and the council members talked to a lot of their staff, their public works directors, their sewer and water treatment operators and came upon some basic proposals saying, if we have arbitrary rules that don't meet science, that don't follow what the EPA is saying, we should take another look at those rules. And so we worked with Democrats and Republicans, mainly rural ones, to try to get some legislation passed because the PCA and the governor weren't really listening to some of the proposals we had had. So we took it to the legislature. What we proposed was an independent peer review for expensive or novel regulations modeled after the EPA. Believe it or not, the federal government is less stringent than Minnesota. So we were just trying to get back to what we thought were some basic, common sense guidelines on some of the water quality rules. There were a couple of them that we had proposed to suspend until they could do peer review on them. We also asked that a cost study be made so cities would know and have some predictability in what you're going to be facing in the coming years under these particular rules that did pass, the cost study did pass. Wisconsin passed a cost study analysis similar to ours a couple of years ago and found out it will cost billions of dollars. And Wisconsin's rules are actually less stringent than Minnesota's. So at least we're going to get an idea and I think there's going to be some sticker shock in the next couple of years at how much this is going to cost. And we're going to try to work as a coalition to find out, is there money in the bonding bill that we can have? Can we relieve some of these regulations? Because one of the biggest challenges local governments have are unfunded mandates in the legislature. Someone has a great idea, they throw it at you and so you figure out how to pay for it. And in some cases, we have cities in northwestern Minnesota which are going to have to double or triple their sewer and water fees to be able to pay for some of this stuff. And of course, you know who gets blamed. We're not going to talk about the PCA, they're going to have you guys pushed around on that. So we're trying to do what we can. So going independent peer review is required. The commissioner has discretion to do peer review if they want. That was in the legislation. The cost study got funded. We wanted legislative approval for expensive rules. They decided not to pass that. The governor was adamantly opposed to having the legislature looking at rules and approving them. The wild rice sulfate standard was given relief, that's an iron range issue mainly. But they are part of the coalition, so we work together in that. PCA is going to hire two staff to work with cities. Now, we're going to be monitoring that very close. Are they going to work with you or come and browbeat you? So we'd like you to let us know, you know, how is that working? Are they being helpful or are they coming in and ordering your public works people to do expensive things that's not in the law? So we need to have some interaction on that. And then one very important thing that we worked on is self-reporting for minor violations of a permit. For example, if you have a major storm and you have an accidental discharge that is no fault of the city of St. James, but it happens, under current law, and this happens periodically, cities can be fined by the Pollution Control Agency $10,000, $50,000, $100,000 for an accidental discharge after a storm. Under this particular legislation that passed, if you report the problem and you mitigate it and clean up the issue, they can't come after you with a hammer and fine you as long as you self-report and take care of the problem. So we're trying to work together. It doesn't make sense, in our opinion, to have an agency fining a local government for an accidental discharge because of a storm. So that's one change that was made that I think is very positive. Next item was workforce housing. What workforce housing is to try to find middle-income residents a place where we're having problems drawing housing to meet the demand. It's market failure. It is not low-income housing. It is mainly for middle-class working families where the market is failing to meet the need. For example, Worthington doesn't build a unit since bell bottoms were in style. So what we're trying to do is, we had a grant program and a tax credit program. We were trying to get that through to get investors to jumpstart some of these markets where we just don't have the units being built that are needed for middle-class families. So we supported $100 million in tax credits for investors and developers as well as a grant program in an office in the D. department. What they did is they expanded the pilot program, $5.4 million, which is only for Greater Minnesota. The important part is this is housed at deed, not housing finance. So it's focused on economic development, not low-income housing per se. So there's a workforce need in Jackson. We found out that about a fourth of the workforce drives over thirty miles to go to work in Jackson because there just is no middle-income housing available there. So we're going to do some more work on workforce housing in the next session. You can see by the handout kind of how many units you can get for a hundred thousand a unit. The next item is job training. This is modeled after a pilot program that deed started. We did pass a $1.8 million program that's a tax credit basically for, or it's a grant. It's a grant that is used like a tax credit for a particular employer that may want to hire some special skilled employees or upgrade current employee skills. To give an example, up in the northern part of the state, there's a welding shop that wants to upgrade their skills for specific nuclear or oil rig and welding that they don't have right now. They said they'd like to fabricate all of these pieces internally in Minnesota, but they didn't really have the money in the budget for training those workers. And they were thinking of outsourcing that welding to other states. But through this particular program, they're able to bring in specialized trainers to train their employees, keep them here, fabricate the parts. And the tax revenue that will be realized by keeping and expanding the employment base will more than pay for the program. Broadband was another program that received a lot of attention. Last year, we got $20 million that was funded. We had $40 million in requests, so there was a shortfall of about $20 million. We fought very hard for some expansion of this. We ended up with just shy of $11 million for broadband expansion. It'll be on the agenda in the future. And the BDPI is a grant program that's used if you want to expand a business in town and maybe they need a road put in or a sewer pipe or a water pipe. This particular program helps match dollars. So if it's a million-dollar program, they might fund $500,000 to help pay for that. We ended up with $4.2 million, the next biennium, one million in bonding, 3.2 million in general fund. And I want to thank Representative Torkelson, who's down from this area, who is a very big supporter of this particular program. This is one of the few programs, it's an all-rural program. It is only, the only eligible participants have to be in rural Minnesota for BDPI. We also had an annexation bill that really isn't too relevant to cities that are not close together. So for St. James, it's not real relevant. But up in central Minnesota, we had some disputes with some cities that were close together with townships. This is a bill that wasn't heard, I'm not going to go into it because it's going to take too much time. What didn't happen, transportation. There's a lot of discussion about a transportation session. The Senate wanted a gas tax, the House... The Senate wanted a gas tax, the House wanted to use the surplus. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, under advisement from our mayors and council folks, said, why don't we try to do some of each? And they just ended up looking at each other in the conference committee and didn't come up with a solution. Our two main priorities that the, the mayors and the members of the councils on our exec board wanted us to focus on for lobbying were two programs. One was corridors of commerce, which are roads like Highway fourteen, Highway sixteen, Highway twenty-three, Highway three seventy-one, kind of those major thoroughfares that connect the regional centers. This was something that the coalition actually came up with about three years ago and we were able to put it into place. And that's what's funding, if you've seen Highway fourteen, will now be four lane from Mankato to Nicolet and eventually to Duell, all the way to Rochester. The corridors of commerce program is what's funding that. And we're very proud to have been part of the initiation of that program. The other item that we were told to focus on was the fact that cities under five thousand, under the Minnesota constitution right now, receive no money back under the constitutional allotment of the gas tax. So if you fill up your tank at Duell, Minnesota right now, they receive a certain portion of the gas tax back to the city of Duell because they're bigger than five thousand people. If you fill up your tank at St. James or you fill up your tank in Sleepy Eye, you, they receive no dollars back because they are not in the constitutional formula. There's a fifty-nine, twenty-nine, nine percent of the gas tax that goes to, fifty-nine percent goes to state highways, twenty-nine to counties, and nine percent to cities of five thousand or greater. This city does not, I don't believe you meet the five thousand threshold, you're a few hundred short. So you're, you're just not quite there. And what did happen, we advocated for some money to be used and even though there was no transportation bill, we were able to, I don't want to say sneak in, but we were able to advocate for and get put into law at least a twelve point five million dollars worth of funding for cities under five thousand to be used for improvement, maintenance of your streets. And those dollars will be coming now in this by any and, to help pay for street projects or overlays or whatever. And I don't know if you have your allotment decided, did they give you a?
Yes.
They, they gave you a figure, do you know how much it is?
Fifty-three thousand.
Fifty-three thousand, so, you know, while that may not be a ton of money, I'll take that over zero. And you are paying in, your people here pay into the gas tax. The problem is we're not going to change the constitution. So we came up with the idea of let's use some general fund money for all those small towns that, that need money for your streets as well. So despite strong bipartisan support, we didn't get a lot out of the session from what we put into it, but we did have divided government. The tax cuts kind of crowded out the workforce housing credits and the LGA increases we were advocating for. And really the success for next year, we're hoping we'll have an engaged group of local governments. I really truly believe that the, the small city aid for transportation can become a reality if we can get every single council that we're meeting with, all eighty-five cities can get together and say, we really need this. And you've talked to Tony Cornish and Rod Hamilton and Paul Torkelson, Julie Rosen and your legislators, say this is a really big deal for us. We advocated for a little more than double of what actually happened on an ongoing basis. So we'd be looking at a little over a hundred thousand a year at least for you to be able to use for your city streets. Because it's only fair that you pay and you get something back for your, for your streets. So what's next, it's a non-budget year, it's going to be a short session, ten to eleven weeks. It starts in March and ends in May. We don't know if there'll be a tax bill, but we hope you'd help advocate for, for those things like LGA and those tax credits. We do believe there'll be a bonding bill, Paul Torkelson's chair of the bonding committee. He was instrumenting, instrumental in helping get, get that BDPI money. Transportation funding, corridors of commerce and the small city aid are big deals for us. We're, we're leaving it to the wisdom of the legislature on how to pay for it, but we really want the bill to pass. We don't believe there's going to be radical changes to any policies just because it's an election year and a short session. And every member of the House and Senate is up in November. Upcoming events, as I mentioned in that blue packet, we do have our summer conference, the registration is there. We encourage any or all of you to attend that in Duluth, July twenty-second to the twenty-fourth. Myself and my colleagues are visiting the cities between now and October to update you on the legislature's progress. Our fall conference is scheduled for November twelfth to the thirteenth. If you can't make the one in Duluth in July, would really encourage you to send someone to that fall conference. That's where all of these policies are developed. So if you think we're on the wrong track with what we're doing, that's really where a lot of these policies are made. So I, I've been from rural Minnesota, lived in Marshall, yeah, I lobby part-time in the Twin Cities during session. I live there four days a week. I really believe we're on the right track with a lot of the things that we're doing. I'm particularly excited about that small city aid for transportation because I think we've got, I think we've got a great opportunity to get that passed. If we can't get in a big transportation bill, we'll try to get it in another bill. But we want to make sure that when you pay your dues, you're getting your money's worth out of it. And I was asked at another council meeting what the dues thing would be. It's going to be, we proposed the dues as the same they were last year. So that was, as you do your budget, you kind of know what to, to think about for that. Any questions? Sorry, it took so much time. Tried to pound twenty pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag here, so, thank you so much.
Couple things before you go, we looked for seven and a quarter million bucks for infrastructure for 2016 because Highway four is coming through. Obviously, we didn't get anything. Julie Rosen called two days ago, I think, and said she'll diligently support that bill, very vehemently will support it in 2016. Tony Cornish called and about done there, I still have nothing from Paul Torkelson. So we're looking for, I'll tell you in a minute, the governor's office called. Please bear with me just a moment. Brennan Furnas, he's on the transportation committee with Mark Dayton's office. He called, he called me on June twenty-fourth. So he, they're coming down to visit St. James and said they called a day ahead that we would take the time to show everything through town. Governor Dayton supports our request for the seven and a quarter million dollars for next year as is all of our representatives. So he will come down, he didn't know if Governor Dayton would come along or not, but he certainly will be because he's representing the bondings and the bonding committee for, for the governors for 2016. So we're going to name all this apart, we can get, if not all of a grant, partial grant, some from a PFA, I think is the new, a, a new appropriation or a new funding portion. Well, PFA, which is Public Facilities Authority, where part of it will be a grant, part of it will be a loan, a low-interest loan like less than two percent, one point nine nine or something fixed rate. So we're probably going to ask for, keep it for the next year for that, to ask for your support as these folks come down. And hopefully there's a bonding, they should have, they believe there's going to be a bonding bill in 2016. You can't assure anything, but you hope for the best and prepare for the worst, I guess. So we did not get funding in 2015, we sent it out two or three weeks ago and I've had two or three calls, that's a good sign.
Are there any other pieces of legislation that you would need help with or you want to keep an eye on? I'm ignoring that, I'm going to get some extra, do you have any specific bonding bills or other proposals?
Not at this moment in time. We're storing me up on this, from the, as part of the fifty-three thousand bucks, we're going to try and do, let me see, Armstrong to going east on Weston Avenue and then head east, head toward our storm sewer to get it out to our.
Okay.
From the creek to the creek.
Yeah, to the creek, it's going to be substantial. So we're probably going to have to bond for probably that, we hope to get some help with some of that as well. And this fifty-three thousand bucks will help us, give us a start toward that because we have a substantial problem from, on the seventh avenue from Armstrong, both east and west. And then up in like eighth and like there in the north as well for the storm sewer. And we have a collapsing sewer that's supposed to be like this, but it's like this. It goes from the lake underground to the city all the way to the fire hall, which is two and a half million bucks.
Something like that.
It's collapsing, so we've got to televise it, but two and a half million bucks redo it because it's, it's. You take ten feet out and twenty feet collapse just because it's, when was it put in the fifties, Ray?
I have no idea when it was put in.
Got to be back in the fifties, I'm guessing fifty years ago. Before Joe and I and Steve were born, and maybe a little after. Anyhow, we appreciate helping that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome, have a great night. Okay, let me see, building projects, thirteen B, park and water department. Yep, come on up.
Last month, we went up bid for a new shelter at the Memorial Park as well as the skating rink. And the bids came in and they were substantially higher than we anticipated. So we called all the contractors back and had them revise them. And in your pamphlet, or in your booklets, you've got the prices now what's come in. They are still over budget. For the Memorial Park shelter, I had fifty thousand dollars budget and I don't know what the final figure is, right offhand.
Fifty-nine five.
Fifty-nine five, but that does not include any sewer or water or electrical. A, the skating rink was not budgeted for.
A reserve that we're going to use.
It was going to be used out of reserve.
And same with water, what did you get budgeted, what did Mark say?
Not nearly what this came in for.
Sixty-two, nine, forty-one.
Yeah. I didn't have that much.
Forty, our budget was forty.
When you asked them to revise, what was the revision?
We put slab on grade instead of footings underneath the building. We met with Harry, our building inspector, and he said if we put twenty-four inches of granular underneath the slab, he would sign off on slab on grade, so.
And that saved how much?
About ten thousand dollars. Yeah, between ten and fifteen.
The building, well, the water department building was already a slab on grade.
These other revised figures here?
Yes.
Reflecting that?
The only other change is on the Memorial Park building for assigned construction. We got a revised quote from the lumber and that was equal to the oversome number of thirty-two thousand dollars for material.
So twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars off?
Right. The reason that the, we asked for the materials to be bid separately is if the city purchases the materials for the park buildings, there's no sales tax, which will save us six percent, over six percent.
It's twenty-one, twenty-one hundred dollars per project, so it's over six thousand dollars.
So what was your estimate on the water department?
Forty.
Forty.
Originally, we were talking about a smaller building also.
And also, we were looking at doing a lot of this work in-house. We were going to prep all of the sites, put, we were going to dig the water sewer lines in. But with the busy schedule we've got right now, we can't take time away from patching streets and getting that stuff done in order to do it, so.
Probably probably can be put on hold and.
What's that?
I mean, there's twenty thousand dollars that Lois did with twenty-three thousand over.
Yeah, we don't have any electric work or?
Yeah.
You have something else?
Nope.
We did, we have, we have enough or reserve to do, to do these three projects if the council so desires. And whether it comes out of capital improvement or another fund, you will have the ability to pay for this and not have to bond for any of the three. If that makes any difference to whatever the council wants, we will do.
Well, I think in the past, we've ordered to go ahead with projects that were pretty close to our estimates. And this would seem to, all three of these seem to be a little bit above our budget.
If they're not done this year, you're probably looking at 2018 before they would be done.
If we pull out a reserve, we still will have some reserve. Not like we're draining this, correct? So, so we have some flexibility in our reserve.
We have ample, we have ample reserve for all three of the projects.
Okay.
We reviewed that before, whenever the bids came in higher, you sat down and reviewed it to make sure that we have the reserve, ample reserve and not coming down to anything we're okay.
And then I know that, that quite often when we do go out to budget for something and, and we give bid back and quite often those, we have excess because we've, it's, the bid's coming lower. So it probably will balance out more than likely.
But you already have a whole cost of, of the job and these estimates are, you're talking like sewer, water, and what? I mean, you don't have any of that in there.
What is the estimate on what that would be?
I won't even guess.
Yeah, people, we will have that information moving to me.
Okay.
On the table, so you have the numbers? Can you have it in a couple of weeks? Mark, Adam, Ray?
We can try.
Okay, at least a ballpark estimate? And we can give you a clearer, clearer definition of the reserve where it'll come from and that we have it adequately on hand to do, to get all your questions answered prior to you making.
So there was no, no estimate, no end of budget for the skating rink? So that would all be?
Correct, that would come out of the reserve.
Yeah, so right, just those three, you're looking at ninety thousand dollars without electrical sewer.
More than that?
One and a half.
Oh, you mean over it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, over it.
Okay, go ahead.
If you look twenty-three thousand on the water department, about ten in Memorial Park, nothing budgeted for skating rink.
So the motion to table, we'll have those questions for your next meeting.
Okay.
Any further discussion? So please sign, get the letter for all three of them and we'll meet ahead of time, ahead of time. Excuse me, for the next council meeting to explain all of the estimates and where it's coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, excuse me, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I propose the table for the next meeting, thank you. Thanks, Ray. Let me see, thirteen C, resolution amending bylaws of the Fire Fighters Relief Association.
At our last meeting, the fire department asked for a fifty-dollar raise in our retirement benefit. Our audit was complete, what fifty-dollar raise would cost the city no money?
So getting enough back on interest?
Our investments in everything.
Pay for the increases, right?
Right, all ours, we have a surplus in our investment.
Okay, you know how much?
At sixty-five thousand.
How much?
Sixty-five thousand.
All right. And what, and was it fifty dollars last year?
Yep.
Right, you're at nineteen and a quarter, went to nineteen seventy-five. And this has to be done this meeting because I think we always run against the timeline, it's going to be done before end of July or something. And this will be effective for 2016.
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, which is?
The move.
Okay, Paul? No, I'm sorry, resolution form, my fault. Okay, both of you just finished with the reading. Do you have anything you want to add, Caleb, Joe, Jason? I'm just quiet over. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by a show of hands.
Staying.
Okay, the resolution passes four, zero, one, with just abstaining. Thanks. Okay, thirteen D, final line for our color and design.
We've been informed by the contractor they will come in the mid-August.
Mid-August.
Mid-August, start the project, so decision has to be made tonight in regards to color and design, please.
I thought we did that last meeting.
Actually, I think we decided we were going to come back and look at everything.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
You decided that, I think.
No, I think we all did, John wasn't sure though. So in the meantime.
You can't blame it on me.
Yeah.
You are here, we can blame it on you.
In the meantime, I've been looking at water colors, okay? And I was going to say, Clay watched a ballgame a couple of weeks ago and they have an awesome water color. And I looked at it and I thought that would be absolutely perfect for St. James, the color. And I looked at it and I thought that would be absolutely perfect. The same thing. The colors were St. James colors. And so my daughter took a picture of it and sent it to Joe. Um, and so I would like to propose that we do ours very similar to St. Clair. Obviously we'll be St. James instead.
Why are we getting away, what, the main concern about painting to begin with, what color is this now here?
It's gray.
Gray, white, light color.
And for the same reason they did the bottom of their water tower, it was the same reason that we do ours a darker color. Cause then it'll hide the mildew and the mold etcetera.
Oh.
And that's why we were looking to go.
Pull the dark color out.
Just because of the, oh, the mold and the mildew that shows on the white color.
And my proposal would be on the St. Clair version of it, that we would have like something to do with St. James, i.e. maybe an engine, rubber-based rubber engine. So.
Well, you could do that, you could do that, the other one, if you want to do it white. I mean, your, alls are doing is talking colors. The reason we're talking darker colors is to get away from the, having to worry about looking at that.
Mold.
Mold.
Mold in the bottom.
And they say, okay, well, twenty-four years ago, they didn't have mold-resistant paint. They do now. Well, if you can believe that, you know.
Mark likes it cause it'll be pink in a couple, three years from today.
I, I definitely would go with it.
Ah, yeah, right.
I, I think that the other one, because it also reflects our school holders.
Is that, if the one on your, uh, if you have your left hand, is that the one you decided last week? Well, bring her both. I mean, we don't know sense if she wants to bring something up different other than what they wanted last week. Cause next week I might find one, a different color that I might like.
That's right, you could, but we have to.
That's not my choice, the blue one. So. I did take a poll of the straw wool and I gave all that to Joe from Republic. I don't even know which one was the most popular.
Wasn't this one?
No, I think that was the one that got the research.
Okay. What do you want to do?
I like the blue with, that's the dad around it, that band. I like the band with the engine. That the, this.
This is what you like?
The blue, the darker, the white band around it.
I do.
Yeah.
White band where? It's gonna be gray.
I'd say I'm talking about taking a white band if I'm that one and putting a white band on the blue. Wasn't there an option like that in the other? I don't even remember what the color was. There we go. We're getting the, gonna be.
Okay, do you want this one? But white instead of gray.
Yeah, with the, uh,
How about down there?
Put the train, uh, yeah, that, keep that.
Gray? Just that makes your color.
Gray or white?
You want this one?
Okay, Josh?
I like the St. Clair one myself.
I, I don't like anything with white colors.
I kinda like the St. Clair one, I guess. I like the school color not and the railroad heritage. I mean, you go to railroad days and you see the kind of turnout we have in railroad days.
Why don't you flip-flop it? Put the red on the bottom and the white on the top or whatever. I mean, I think we're sitting there, it took us two months last time. We ended up getting white. You see what white is now.
Yeah.
I don't care if it is gray. The whole discussion was, we didn't want this mold to show up. So now we're back, now we're back to going to light color on the bottom of the water tower. So.
Just maybe you fix the inside and leave the outside of it. If you're trying to get rid of mold, this isn't gonna do it. Yeah, you got it, Mark.
If you don't do the outside when you're doing the inside, there's gonna be burn spots. You're gonna have it piecemeal together.
I wasn't being serious.
I know, but I just want everybody to understand that.
Okay.
And you do need a dark color.
What'd you say?
I think you need a dark color on the bottom.
Make a red on the bottom and a green on top. Doesn't make any difference.
For the sake of, uh, going forward, somebody make a motion of what you want with the colors and we'll see where it goes.
I'm watching that, see it that way, but red, the color reversed, red on the bottom, green on top.
So red be the whole stem down with the?
I think, I think of it, what we discovered on the bottom stem was if we broke it up with a stripe.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it broke dry.
Maybe instead of having blue, do it in red with the white, big white thing like you, you're saying with St. Clair, have it St. James. Is that what you're saying? I don't have a problem with that. As long as that we get a dark color.
It won't show mold. The red would definitely do that.
I, I agree that with the dark, all that blue on the other one, and I don't think that looks good. I, I like the idea of having a big band in there and putting St. James in there. We don't need the Minnesota on there. Yeah, you could put a railroad locomotive on there or whatever, but we're in Minnesota. So if it's just St. James, yeah, I don't know.
If you're this far, then don't over your.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you're in trouble.
So do you want this middle decal or you want this decal?
I like the, uh, the St. Clair style.
Yeah, a lot of large letters, yeah.
Yep, big, big letters and.
So how do you want the colors?
Well, if you go, if you go red on, red on white like it is and go red on the top and red and then have your white band on down there so hard to break up that red.
Down here?
Like they have in that blue.
So it's gonna be red up here, white in the middle and red in the center?
With a white stripe and then your red lettering, St. James with a black lettering.
You're gonna have red all the way down? To the ground?
Well, do they, does, do we have any problem? Well, I mean, after you're gonna go red, you might as well go all the way down.
Mark, do you have any thoughts on that?
Nope.
Well, you just want to get in the middle.
I mean, we don't have, you don't have any color, any problem with the color discoloring on, down on the lower on the?
Not overly.
Now, that's answer, everybody will rule, or red all the way. We stay on that overly.
So the stripe?
Red, the red will not discolor like it used to. The red that they put out now will stay a, a red depending on your darkness.
It doesn't turn pink. Cars don't turn pink.
What's that?
Cars don't turn pink from the sunshine. So I would imagine that, that what they put on the water tower.
The car doesn't put out, it's a barrier that you set a year.
This is probably what it might, what my, with the stripe, breaking it up. But then a little red. Gap on the top.
Show us the green.
Yeah. So it'd be similar to this proposal.
That's, Josh, that's what I totally look like at food processing.
With the little red cap on the top.
Yeah, I don't like that. That's ugly. I like the black lettering that St. Clair got back.
I, I like the idea of the big white stripe with the St. James and red. You want to put a couple of locomotives on there, run a red down to the base and put your white stripe in there to break it up.
You think the white should be like an eggshell or a, or a off-white so it isn't clear white, Mark?
I think so. Yeah. I don't think you want a bright white.
No.
They do have the color that, uh, when you drive by, it may also look a little bluish. So I'm okay.
Huh. Well, at least that's not on a park that's in a tank water. So it's not gonna get mildew on that side part for itself. And I think that was our biggest concern in a lot of discussions. So your motion was what, Paul?
Well, it's actually gray on the top, red and the white stripe with the locomotive on it, St. James. And then, um, red on the bottom. I didn't address the stem. I'm fine with it.
A couple of stripes like that would be on the stem?
Down, the strike went down and then red all the way.
And would you be okay with a, so we don't get pure white, something sort of gray, but of course the lighting gets a sort of gray so you don't have the, you know?
Yeah, on, on eggshell.
Eggshell or whatever it's called.
Good.
Could you amend your motion in the, uh, the top, all second?
Any further discussion? So do you have a, figured out, Mark, what you're gonna ask him or Joe, somebody see if you can. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Looking through the analysts. It's all done. Uh, fireworks contributions this year was from the, uh, the cost was about six thousand dollars. We are, currently have collected five thousand.
Or a thousand?
Uh, we, we've collected forty-nine hundred and fifty dollars or one thousand dollars, fif- one thousand fifty dollars short. We'd appreciate any more contributions from any one that would like to give them. Contributions that we received this year are from the American Legion, American Legion Auxiliary, the VFW, VFW Auxiliary, the Eagles, the Lions and the Rotary. So I want to personally, and on, on behalf of myself, the council and the entire St. James community, thank all of these organizations for contributing for the fireworks. Again, we're about a thousand fifty dollars short. So if any organization or any person or entity would like to contribute for it, please bring it to City Hall to make up the shortfall we currently have of about one thousand fifty dollars. Ray? When's the same voting again? Please tell me again.
The week of August.
Thank you. Mark? Adam?
Nope.
Mark? Linda?
Moving this weekend is Minions. It's opening weekend and it's busy.
And you again forgot to come to the mic, right? Oh, okay, you didn't want to. Okay. Kevin, you want to bring something up?
No.
No? Okay. Amanda? Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Done.
Right.
Josh, thanks, Jen, for attending and have a great night.